Big time.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Now, what we're talking about.
I'm trying.
How you doing today?
Making it.
And we can do this.
Thanks.
Was that good for you to make sure of building today?
Good morning.
Oh, Jack, we definitely have to go.
No, I don't.
Can you see something?
Well, yeah, right. It looks like. I can't read.
That's probably the part.
You have the context written down. Saying, should go scratch now.
Because I don't want to miss a lot.
Somebody else is here. What's the understanding context? For sure. Do you have a parking ticket for that?
I do. It's fine. No, please. I do have, I have six months.
Six months?
Oh, wow.
Okay, you're in a uniform. You're missing your frogs. Ribbit, ribbit, you know, for the belt.
I'm so gross. And it's so much pain when I got out. I just.
Maybe you need a frog.
Bring me.
Is it pumpkin or just sweet?
Yes.
Marcus, one of those chairs will flip over, so be careful. I'm not sure which one it is, but I don't.
Woo!
Yeah, it's not funny.
I can go call him workers' comp.
It wouldn't be funny if we really had to.
Let's just stop reaching and not playing.
You there, right?
Oh, goodness.
I think you got the chair, Marcus. They don't call you in.
There's two. We know two. Truman's not here. Who else?
Is that testing? Or doing something?
Here's Mr. McWhorter.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the workshop, City, Griffin Board of Commissioners, May 24, 2022. It is our annual fiscal year 2022-2023 budget presentation. So this is O'Condon and her team. Welcome, everybody.
Yeah, I have a good crowd today of all directors. All right. You all ready?
Great roll.
Okay. All right. Well, as usual, I first need to thank all of those that are sitting in this room behind me. It's been a difficult year, a difficult budget for many reasons, but most specifically, I think, just the economic climate that we're all in, that we're all having a challenging time navigating through. So it was not an easy budget. And then to add to that, we changed our software for the first time in ever. So we had to go through. We had to go through and figure out new software along with a complicated budget. So it's been, I'll say, maybe a rough couple of months. And we're still actually sort of trying to figure out how all of it works. So hopefully, we don't miss anything today. But I'm sure if we do, that Mr. Schwab or Ms. Thompson can correct me. Especially thanks to them, I don't, we certainly wouldn't have a balanced budget had they not worked so closely with me to make sure that we can make this balanced and fair. And then also, I'd like to thank Ms. Bartholomew and Ms. Tremel because they sort of kept everybody at bay and away from me and got them where they needed to go and still get help without having to bother me the last month or so. And that was very helpful. With that said, let's move on to the budget presentation. The first thing that we need to make note of is that this has been posted in the Griffin Daily News on May 11, 2022, where we advertised for two public hearings on the budget. One is for this evening at 6:00 PM in this room, and then another one on June 14 at 6:00 PM. If we have some big changes that need to take place after today's discussion, then we can, of course, postpone that. Or if we just have a couple of changes between tonight's public hearing and the 14th, then we can go ahead and move forward with that. The ad also included the date of the vote as being on June 14 for the adoption of the fiscal year ending June 30, 2023, capital and operating budgets. It has been available in my office since Friday, May 13, and it has also been on the city's website. We have not had a citizen come in the office to review the budget. And I was hoping to figure out how many visitors have actually clicked on that budget link on the website, but we couldn't quite figure that out at this time. So I'm not sure how many have actually visited the website. Again, I do believe that this shows a fair and balanced budget. Although I have noted in the budget summary that there are a few areas that we may have to reconsider later in this calendar year just because of the high fluctuations in costs, supplies, personnel, those kind of things. And I think you'll notice as we go throughout the budget this morning, there is a common theme. We do have some increase in revenue, but unfortunately, our expenses increased just as much if not more. So our operating supplies, our tools, our capital, vehicle, personnel costs, all of that went up. And we'll talk about that in a little more specifics next. Sorry, I'm trying to get this volume off. Cody, can you come turn this volume off? I don't know why it keeps going. PowerPoint. Yeah. Got you. The volume to turn off because, damn, it actually will. Thank you. All right. Let's go ahead and turn this on to the next slide. All right. So of course, we always try and balance space or balance our budget based on our goals. So as you remember, I hope that at our annual goals workshop in January, we went through five different goals from both the Board of Commissioners as well as the staff. And most of them are pretty similar. As always, almost substandard housing, bike, trash, litter and junk, downtown redevelopment, crime reduction, and a compensation study for this year. So with those areas of importance in mind, we looked at our budget this year. Our department directors prioritized those goals, and we came up with the following budget. This year, our overall revenues exceed expenditures by $1,354,378. That's actually an increase from last year. So we're doing a little bit better there. Last year, it was 1.29. Our general fund expenditures exceed revenues by $9,79,844. Unfortunately, those expenditures and their excess actually increased as well from FY '22 when it was a little less than $9 million. Our total general fund revenue is up $3,249,433. That is without transfers. And last year, it was up $2,448,000. So again, another pretty substantial increase in revenue for our general fund. That's made up with real and personal property tax is up about $55,000. Motor vehicle tax and the TAVT increase of about $143,000. And we have budgeted a $475,000 increase in our local option sales tax. Our property tax for fiscal year '22, year-to-date, we've collected $4.66 million. Those numbers also include our TADS and our TIPS. So that's not just real and personal property, but all of that as well. In '21, we collected $4.36, and in '20, we were at $3.74. So we have seen an increase in property tax collection. We do not know what the digest will look like this year yet, but I have been told as of last Friday that the county and the tax assessor are working on that. So we should have, hopefully, an estimate in the next couple of weeks. Our TAVT projection overall this year is $800,000. FY '21 total was $782.34. And year-to-date, we're at $522.627. Our loss projection total is at $5.225 million. Proposed for FY '22 is $4.75. And as of today, we've collected 81.32%, which is $3.862 million. And FY '21, we find, we finished out at $5.025. So we think that that projection is a conservative projection, but something that we will certainly hit. Some of our increase in total revenues is based on our ARPA recovery funds, our T-SLOSS proceeds, and some of those increases that we just talked about. So although it looks like a huge increase, it's really not quite this year. The other thing in general fund that has increased is our licenses and permits are up $24,000. Our fines and forfeitures are up $482,000. And our insurance premium tax is up $134,000. So our total general fund revenue is up $3.249, and that again is without transfers. However, our expenses are also up $3.335 in the general fund. So we're still not making up for those increases in revenue. One of the things to mention in the fines and forfeitures, of course, is our school safety cameras. That's what is the big increase there. And we'll talk a little bit later about adding sessions for those kind of things. Also, as of March 31, our total general fund revenue is at 85% through 75% of the year. So that is also good news. Our total budget of all funds, projected revenues are up $16.54 million. But again, projected expenses are up $19.185 from our original FY '22 projections. Without the T-SLOSS, CDBG, and ARPA, our projected expenses are still up almost $10 million. That's a lot of money. Our expenses, when you break that down, increased in the following ways. Electric is $2.295. Water wastewater is $3.227. Solid waste is at $1.466 million. Stormwater actually decreased in expenses of about $227,453, which ironically, they increased almost that exact same amount last year. And then telecom increased $304,101. Their increase in FY '22 was $429.729. So again, the more that we put out there in operating supplies and trying to gain customers, the more that costs us as well. Our capital requests this year are $14,141,899. In FY '22, it was $8,77,728. Of those, you have $1.473 million for CDBG, $3,727,500 for T-SLOSS. ARPA recovery funds are budgeted at $4.995. Our land maintenance improvements that we have every year, we budget for $400,000. We've had $300,000 in new customer construction for electric. Public Works has been sort of short capital the last several years. So they have a wheel letter budget at $191.5 and a TDA Maxxal dump truck at $205,000. Our general fund capital total this year is $1,389,025. Last year, our general fund capital was at $361,700. So you see a big difference there. About a million of that is in public works. They really sort of cut budgets last year, the directors did, in trying to get that 2% raise for employees. So we're having to make that up this year in that capital. So without CDBG, T-SLOSS, and ARPA, our capital totals are actually $3.945 million, which is down almost $4 million from FY '22. So a lot of the utilities don't have quite the capital they did last year, even though our general fund is up. All right, personnel. We have again been able to budget a 2% increase. If you'll remember, this is a little different than we've done in the past. Not every employee is guaranteed a 2% increase. What this does is budget 2% for each department. And then based on evaluations throughout the year, they are given a raise dependent upon how those evaluations come out. So last year, I think our range was either zero if you did not actually meet your expectations. If you needed improvements, you were not eligible for a raid, raise. But if you met expectations, you exceeded most, or you exceeded all, you got a percentage of a 2% raise. And so some people actually got more than 2% based on what that number was. And that amount was determined citywide. So a department didn't get to decide how many people got the 3% or how many people got the 2%. That was done once we were able to calculate that total amount of money that we were going to be able to give. So we're asking to do that the same way this year. I will go ahead and note, though, that this does not include anything in regards to our compensation study. Ms. Woods and I met with that consultant yesterday afternoon. Timing-wise, it didn't give us the opportunity to be able to put that within this budget. But we are looking at possibly $1.3 million that we are short. As y'all know, that's almost three mils of tax. So we're going to have to figure out what to do there. 2% is a great start, but a lot of these positions are 5%, 6%, 8%, 10% below the minimum in our market. And market in this study was not really private companies, with the exception of electric and water. It was more our cities that are around us and that are similar in demographic and in size. So we'll have to look at that. One of the other things that we'll need to look at that we have realized is a problem is overtime. I think that is because of all of our vacancies. So in FY 2020, we paid $681,297 in overtime. In 2021, that jumped up drastically to $858,010. In '22, to date, we have paid $944,573. So we have a million-dollar problem right there in overtime, where if we go ahead and try and get some of these salaries competitive, we can fill some vacant positions and not have to pay all this overtime. We've budgeted for FY '23, $872,665. You can see the increase as we've gone on throughout the year. I also know with COVID, with the other things that have been going on, it's not just because of salaries, but that is something that we have looked at and tried to make sure that we are controlling better for next fiscal year. Other highlights in personnel, we broke it up at general fund and enterprise fund. First, in general fund and management services, we have reclassified the administrative coordinator position to an executive assistant. This is based on the ongoing and expanding role that Ms. Tremel has in my office, the open records request, the different things that she is helping me with now. So Ms. Bartholomew, although not being reclassed in gray, is being retitled to a senior executive assistant, also trying to get away with some of the secretary nomenclature that is a little antiquated at this point. In DOAS, we have reestablished the account at one position. We're funding that for half the year, starting January 1. If you'll remember, last year, we came to you and said that we will not need that position anymore because of OpenGov and the implementation of that software would actually lessen some of the burden in accounting. But what we found out is that's really not the case. It may have increased it a little bit. And then also, with the new reporting requirements that we have with the American Rescue Plan Act, they need a little bit of help in that department. So we're going to fund that again, starting January 1. In IT, they have reclassified a systems administrator to cybersecurity administrator. I think that's just sort of self-explanatory at this point in the kind of climate that we're living in. So that person will actually concentrate mostly on cybersecurity. And then the senior systems administrator is actually going to be reclassed to an IT manager. So you'll now have, in that structure, you'll have Mr. Cotton as the chief technology officer, the IT manager and the telecom manager, which we did last year, will both report to him to try and sort of separate those general fund and enterprise fund positions a little bit more, but also still create, create some hierarchy within that department. Fire, we are reclassifying a lieutenant to a lieutenant and EMS coordinator. Again, there's a common theme between public safety that there's a lot of training requirements are being increased. And so at this point, based on the amount of calls that we get for medical, we do feel like having an EMS coordinator will be helpful in the fire department. And then police is reclassifying a vacant patrol officer to a training sergeant. So that person will be in charge of not just training, but coordinating all of the training that is now required to keep our certifications intact. Public Works, we have added a public works operations manager in order to sort of make this as, as easy as possible and keep the number of positions within that department as a whole. We've unfunded the administrative assistant for motor pool. In personnel, we actually have a, a person that started, I don't know, a couple of months ago.
Kelvin's here.
And she has really just outshown what we thought we would need in motor pools. We've moved her as an admin coordinator to the entire public works department. Unfortunately, she's not at motor pool, but she has the ability to handle that entire department and doesn't just need a position for motor pool. So we worked well with Mr. Hopper to get that sort of changed over. So you have the same number of positions, just in a little bit different fashion at that point. For our enterprise funds, in telecom, we've added two employees since we're doing our fiber expansion now. We have a systems engineer that would be budgeted to start July 1 and a support specialist that would start at January 1 or funded, starting January 1. The systems engineer is to help sort of build everything out. And then the support specialist is, of course, once it's built out, if there's any troubleshooting problems, and that person will be able to go out and help there. Unfortunately, Mr. Sprayberry can't do it all by himself at this point because we're adding more customers almost monthly. So those two employees are needed. Solid waste, as you all know, I think, we had our shorts, some drivers. So we're falling a little bit behind on our, our routes. So we're adding a swing driver. We have one currently that sits in the director's department. That gives him the ability to say, go work in commercial today, go work at landfill today. So we're adding a second person for that. It's not designed or not specified for any particular division, but we'll report to Mr. Ennis, and he can sort of make sure throughout the week that that schedule is where we need him to be if somebody's on vacation or something along those lines. Watershed management probably has our most changes. As you already know, we have eliminated the deputy director position with the promotion of Mr. Lewis now as director of watershed management. And instead of the deputy director position, we've added two operations managers. Their workload these days, what they have to do with their sludge drying and then what is required now for EPA and our water quality, really needs more than one person trying to handle that. So we will have an operations manager for water, and we're proposing an operations manager for wastewater. We've also added a GIS technician in that department to help with the workload and mapping and inventorying those kind of systems. And finally, we realized that stormwater really has become its own beast. And so we have sort of taken that out of watershed management and asked Mr. Martin if he will become a director for us. So we'll have watershed management and stormwater as separate departments and reclass him from a deputy director to a director. Any questions so far on personnel changes?
Oh, I did have one.
Yes, Nick.
Oh, I can't remember. It was in the, oh, it's department, the one that was planned for half a year. Is that a full-time or part-time?
That is a full-time position. We're just not starting it until January 1.
Okay.
Yes, all of those are full-time. I don't, I didn't make any really notes on part-time. I don't think much changed part-time.
Okay.
All right. Insurance is a big change this year as well. As y'all probably remember, last year, we changed from Blue Cross Blue Shield to Cigna. Unfortunately, Cigna increased our rate by about 25%, which we could not do. We knew last year that that was going to happen. So it sort of gave us the year to prepare because we are now suggesting that we go self-insure. That will be with Aetna Meritane. So there's no insurance increase for employees this year. We have done that every single year. We've been able to absorb the insurance increase with the exception of fiscal year 2021. And so this increase is 2.12%, which is a little over $80,000. So the city is going to absorb that cost and not pass it along. There will still be a $1,500 deductible and your same out-of-pocket cost. So there are some changes that will be made, especially if you have a high-cost prescription or some other kind of high claim. We're actually going through open enrollment right now. So we had educational seminars last week with our MSI benefits coordinator, who's our broker. He was able to sit down with those employees that came and explain to them what that change means, but that will become effective July 1. We think from here on out, a lot better able to manage sort of what those increases are going to be. They're not going to hit you again for 25%. It's normally more a 2%, 3%, almost cost of living type increase instead. So although it makes us a little nervous to try and manage that for the first year, I do think that as far as budget and finances are concerned, it's going to be the best for us. I think Mr. Schwab already talked with some other cities that have moved to that and sort of working out sort of cash flow and how that will go for him. So it will be a change, but we do think it will be in the best benefit for everyone. Other parts of our insurance.
Can you, um, just my better understanding on, on self-insuring? So we have a company that's a partner with us?
Yes.
You end up handling everything internally?
Right. Do you want to sort of, sorry, talk about that a little bit more? Let me, let me take it to you.
Thank you. So Meritane is a, a TPA for Aetna. And so what happens with self-insured, where you, we pay the funds, I'm sorry, we pay the claims as the claims come in. So we're currently fully insured, and the city's been fully insured all this time, which means we paid $450,000 every single month for everyone that was on the plan. So it didn't matter if we had $5,000 in claims, $10,000 in claims, that's all irrelevant. It was a flat payment, basically. So going self-insured, you pay on the claims that actually come in. So it's projected that in July, we'll have very few claims that actually come in on the new plan because folks won't be able to go to the doctor yet. So we, those expenses will be lower in July. They'll start increasing more a little bit in August as folks go to the doctor. So if I go to the doctor and have a $5,000 claim, once it goes to the network, the deductions apply, whatever, then we know we have to pay $4,000 for my claim, or the city does, then the city funds it directly. So it's all really kind of seamless. The employee doesn't see it, but the benefit of one self-insured is, is just the huge savings in it.
Is there a cap, though, in terms of someone has like a major?
There is a cap. And so in this plan, we have a 1,500, I'm sorry, a $150,000 specific deductible. So if my claims, and I'm just using myself as an example, especially since I'm injured. But if I exceeded $150,000, then at that point, we would pay no more money. Our stock loss carrier or Aetna would continue to pay the rest. We also have an aggregate, an aggregate portion where if the city as a whole spends $6.7 million, for example, then the carrier absorbs all the rest. So that's how we have the protection. The stock loss deductible, which is individual specific, and then the aggregate totals. That's what keeps us safe.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So a little bit more on insurance. It's lightening from batteries. Sorry. Check it the day before, and of course, they die the next day. All right. Next on insurance is our dental life and long-term disability. That is pretty much remaining the same. Dental did decrease about $10,000, $12,000, but because of that $82,000 increase, the city is going to keep that savings to help pay for that. Unfortunately, property liability increased $112,345, which is 17%. That is a very large increase. But if you'll remember, last year, we had a lot of claims. Unfortunately, that has not slowed down this year in our property liability. So I don't know what that increase will look like for next fiscal year, but we are working very hard to keep that down. Our workers' comp did decrease $29,420. So I feel like we've done a good job in explaining to employees when to use that, when not to. Our pension actually went up the most at $353,913. So our employees will continue to pay 2%. And the city's share increased to 23.26%. The next thing in expenses that is not fun to talk about these days is fuel. We have budgeted $4.20 per gallon for regular. This is one of those things that I think we will be coming back to you in no time saying we've got to increase it across the board. Diesel is $5 per gallon. It has been a very, very long time. I actually went back, I think, about 10 years. So look and see if we have ever budgeted lower than what we paid the highest amount for the fiscal year prior, and I could not find it. So this is very risky. But we didn't really have a choice to get this budget balanced. So we may be coming back sooner than a year to say we've got to have a fuel adjustment. What we've realized is that for about every nickel that we change it, there's a $24,000 change to the budget. So something that really is detrimental across the board doesn't have much effect when you look at it from that perspective. So we could be back based on markets, based on forecasting. As y'all have seen the last couple of days, it's increased. So we like to have a little bit more of a cushion there, and this year, we do not. All right. So next one, expense highlights for our general fund. These are some of my favorite pictures, although Mr. Jacobs is not very happy with me. In management services, our total increased $45,633. Your budget is proposed to increase $19,108. Mine increased $25,646, which is mainly due to the reclassification of the employee from administrative coordinator to executive assistant. Communications and public relations decreased $6,986. The staff attorney decreased $3,685. City attorney by contract increased $22,150. And then, of course, no one's term is up at the end of this year, so we do not have to hold an election in November. So elections decreased $1,600. Next year, you'll see it back in there for when everybody's term expires at the end of next year. Your particular expenses that are most. Your particular expenses that are most notable would be Muni Code, of course. That is where we codify our ordinances online so that our community can see them. Education and training actually increased a good bit to $15,000. Uh, fireworks are at $12,000. The UGA Griffin payment that we make every year is at 17.5. Our archway payment is $20,000 and of course, we always keep $100,000 in contingency money for you all. Um, last year, a lot of that was used in our enix, that are our, uh, redistricting. Sorry, you can apportion them, um, and the costs that we had associated with that. So we always like to have a little bit of money in there for you all. Municipal court, this is a big change this year as well. Um, our expense increased $52,657. What this does is add five additional court sessions per month. If you get a citation today, you're coming to court. In November. What that does to your court calendar is really make a lot of people not care to show up. Either they've forgotten or they don't think it's a big deal anymore because that was seven months ago. I really don't care what they do to me now. Um, so we have a lot of failure to appear. We're not able to get people in court to get citations handled. And so we're going to be adding court sessions to get that sort of back down where we don't have that much time between citation and court date. Uh, this also is an additional session for our school safety cameras. So you see that the professional services increased $30,000 for the judge, but the legal services actually only increased 14,400. That's because Mr. Eisen, our solicitor, is not needed for the school safety cameras and is not needed for code enforcement. So Ms. Carden is funneling that for us. We don't think we're going to need an attorney for our school safety cameras. So he is not having to increase his time with us as much, which is why it is, is less. Any questions about those? That's also why we see a little bit of an increase in revenue in municipal court. We do expect that with more court sessions, obviously there's more tickets that'll be dispensed of. In administrative services, our expense increased $636,819. Uh, that sounds like a lot, it is a lot, but in FY '22, it actually increased over a million. A lot of that is directly related to software and the amount of things that are now done through technological advances. Our director increased 43,873. That is where our Open Gov software is paid for, so that's the majority of that increase. Accounting increased 12,917. Again, that's some of those staffing changes. Procurement, um, increased 4,697, so just negligible there. IT, of course, increased 497,873. That's directly related to the software, hardware, those things that we need to be able to operate these days. And in FY '22, increased almost a million dollars, so down a little bit from last year. HR increased 67,376. They are finally going to replace their 2,004, 5, grounded. So that is what that is. They need a new car, it has blown up, so they can't go any further with that one. And then risk management increased $10,080, which is somewhat of a miracle since we have over $100,000 increase in our, um, property liability insurance. Next is public safety. And if you haven't seen that picture on the left, this was a push-up contest between a police officer and one of our, uh, citizens one night. So I thought that was pretty cool that they did that. Their expense for police increased $657,728. A lot of that is vehicle replacements like we do every year. Fortunately, this year we were able to budget for seven, uh, because we can buy four more now. And so we had 11 in the budget, but since we can go ahead and use some unextended salaries, um, we are going to go ahead and purchase four. It's actually on the agenda for tonight for y'all to approve this year, but that will sort of count as life cycle for next year. We are going back to dash cameras as well. So we have lens lock body cameras, we'll have our LPR cameras and then dash cameras. So that total for all those cameras is $153,300 for the year. And body armor replacement, $19,500. Couple other expenses in police, we have SWAT here at $10,500. Our training facility is at $23,648. And inmate custody, we're going to do like we did this past year. Any money that is unextended from FY '22, we will roll over into '23. So we've only budgeted $50,000 with the COVID issues that still are ongoing and bail reform with not keeping anybody in jail. And unless it's a felony or aggravated misdemeanor charge, they don't hold our, our municipal court federal to appears or really probation violations very long, if at all. Um, so fortunately that means we don't have to pay a lot of money in jail fees, but unfortunately that means we have a hard time getting people to come back to court if they're not sitting there until their next court date. So there's some good and bad with that expense decreasing. In fire, their expense for '23 is proposed to increase $298,903. That is made up of turnout here, 15 sets of turnout here this year are $53,700. If you'll remember, every other year we have to do NFPA physicals, so those are budgeted at $27,900, Department Y. Uh, the chief is in need of a new vehicle, he's going to pass his along and he will get something else. So that's budgeted at $44,800. And then their repair and maintenance services has increased $15,000 because their fleet continues to age. So we're also looking at ideas to get some, um, replacements for fire. As I mentioned earlier, public works has increased probably the most drastically in general fund with a 1.284 million dollar increase. The director increased 171,321, mainly due to the new operations manager position. And of course, that person will have to have a vehicle because the whole point is to get them in the field, to have a little succession planning for the director in that role. Our street department increased $1,140,163. The capital in the street department is $812,500. That consists of $80,500 each for three crew pickup trucks. Today they go into the shop and don't know if it'll crank or not, so they've got to be replaced. A boom lift and trailer for $75,200. Right now we rent that and it's not very economically feasible to continue to do that as much as we're doing downtown with lights and banners and other things that a street department handles. And using an electric, um, boom lift and truck is just also not very economically feasible. So we're getting, um, we're proposing to have the public works department purchase their own. They also have asked for an excavator at $75,300, a wheel loader at $191,500 and a team of dump truck at $205,000. Those three things are mostly used for demolition. So the more that we tear down, also great, but the more that we run out that equipment. So that's what those three are budgeted for. Additionally, in the public works department, the pool, uh, again, it's just minimal utilities and insurance. I hope within the next month to two months, we will have a better understanding from our service delivery strategy negotiations as to where that is going. Um, parks has increased $15,316. Mostly they need a new deck mower, so that's budgeted $12,000. The cemetery decreased $83,309. They don't have any capital this year. And then facilities increased $63,266. Um, they are in need of a new pickup truck, so there's $35,000 for that capital purchase. Public Works now also houses the welcome center since they have facilities. So the operational cost for the welcome center is now $95,241, $47,229 of which is allocated to the archives since they are upstairs in that building. Uh, that did increase almost $8,000 from $39,690 in '22. Uh, we actually split the allocation from the archives 50/50 with the county. So each of us will be paying $23,614.50 for that welcome center allocation. The archives total budget is $144,515 and FY '22 is $131,567. So the split this year 50/50 is $72,257.50 between the city and the county. She did ask for a little bit more, um, shelving in the archives because she's getting some more stuff, so that's good news too. Development services, their expenses increased $296,252. Uh, the land make property maintenance and operations, we budgeted the same as last year. As you all know, we are without an executive director and undergoing some review by a consultant right now. Uh, so we don't really know what that operational, uh, expense may be. That again is split 50/50 with the counties, the total ends up being 38.7 times two. Um, but we may see a change there. We hope that in some of our negotiations in the contract that we're trying to do for property maintenance, we may be able to decrease that while maybe having to increase the cost of operations. So that's something that we may have to come back to you as well, uh, once the consultant finishes, um, their recommendation. Comprehensive plan is due next year, so we have $100,000 budgeted in this fiscal year. Um, it's going to be about a $200,000 project, so there will be $100,000 budgeted next year as well. But the way that the timing falls, we'll be able to sort of split that out instead of having to, um, budget for all $200,000 this year. We are going to use a private consultant. We'd like to bid that service out. We think it's important enough and has not been done that way, um, in a few updates. So I think watching what the county is doing with their steering committee and cop plan with Blue Cypress, we feel like that's something that we need to look in at as well. Our building inspections with Charles Abbott is at $339,150. This is the expense in FY '22, it's $242,550. Of course, there's revenue associated with that and that did increase as well. I think that may be in the next slide. And then we have reinstated the fourth code enforcement officer. If you'll remember, we went to two as fully certified, post-certified, uh, code enforcement officers and never could fill that, that fourth position, even with the increase in salaries that we did for PD last year. We did include those two code enforcement officer positions. So Mr. Jacobs and I have talked and we have decided to move that back to a regular code enforcement, non-post certified officer. We think that that one, uh, post-certified officer is enough that we need to be able to come out if needed um, for a code enforcement issue that may turn a little bit more criminal in nature. Um, so we're going to reinstate that one without it being post-certified, which saves a little money there. Uh, development services does not have any capital this year. As we do every year, we budgeted $10,000 for our CDBG application, uh, for possible CDBG in FY '23. Transportation is a big change this year. This is our payment to Three Rivers. Um, it increased $63,350 because we are now considered, uh, sort of a hybrid of the 5307 and 5311 transit program. What that means is we're not just classified as rural anymore because of our new census counts. We also have some urban areas. So unfortunately that cost us a little bit more money in, um, being able to pay for that transit. So that went up drastically. Uh, the revenue associated with the inspections that I mentioned in the last slide from Charles Abbott is $465,500. Last year it was $408,500, which is an increase in revenue, just as you did in expense. Economic development, the expenses in that department have increased $63,354. Uh, we made the change from the part-time administrative assistant in March to full-time administrative assistant. Of course, that now comes with benefits, so not just an hourly rate change, but also a benefit, uh, that we have to budget for. And then Historic City Hall facilities actually went down. It's now at $51,775 compared to last year at $66,110. We have a little bit more historical data as we continue to go with Historic City Hall, so we're able to, um, better budget for utilities. For example, electricity, actually we've budgeted down $6200, so that building is actually pretty energy sufficient, which is nice. Um, revenue, we have budgeted more for at $20,000. In FY '22, we budgeted $14,400. The more that we sort of find our new normal, the more we're seeing it rented. So we think that $20,000 is pretty conservatively estimated and we hope that we'll see a lot more revenue from that. At that point, that concludes our general fund expense highlights. Any more questions for you to enterprise? All right, so our enterprise funds will start with our electric department. The revenues in that department, we are projecting to increase $1240,250. Residential service increased $300,000. This is mostly because of new housing starts. Commercial service, we have projected to be about flat. Industrial service is projected to increase $667,750. Our power cost adjustment and our environmental compliance cost recovery, uh, numbers are expected to decrease $92,900. Our all system sales just increased $155,000 and our delinquent penalties are budgeted as flat as well. If you'll remember, we do have contracts for third-party sales to three different cities in Alabama and those total for this year's budget of $1,63,290. The expenses though increased $241,120. Again, line maintenance and improvements is at $400,000. System protection is $150,000. They need two F-350s at $132,000. Their new customer construction is $300,000. LED conversion for streetlights is at $200,000. I hope that y'all have noticed those around town. I certainly have, they are a lot brighter, um, and look much better as we continue to increase the number of streetlights that we have as well. Uh, we have budgeted $50,000 for downtown parking lot lighting because we've had some complaints about some dark areas downtown. So we'll be looking at that. Automated switching that we always have budgeted is $100,000. And then of course, utility relocations for anything that may pop up there too is budgeted at $50,000. Additionally, their capital this year is totaled at $1616,206. Their transfer to the general fund is about $80,000 higher than last year. So that makes it $8,796,000 compared to $8,712,440. That's just a direct reflection of their increase in revenue. And then their reserve earnings are $549,437 for FY '23. Wastewater's revenue has increased $1,089,994, but our expenses again have increased $1,509,376. Um, one thing to note here, if you're looking at this in whatever fashion that may be, either through our new little charts or through, um, Open Gov itself, we have changed how we budget for depreciation. So I had to remove the numbers from last year's budget to be able to compare apples to apples as closely as possible. Um, otherwise it looked like everything decreased and that's actually not the case. So if you look at it outside of this slide, it may look a little bit different than what it is to be able to compare it, um, as close as possible. So Shoal Creek actually went up $200,255. Potato Creek, we have budgeted an increase of $98,786. Cabin Creek is up $116,244. Blant Mill is up $30,631 and the lift stations are up $48,109. Most of that is just in the cost of supplies increasing so dramatically for us. So that's what those are. And then additionally, our wastewater collection is up $522,404. And sludge management, which is our newest division within that department as of last year, is up $130,546. Our total wastewater capital this year is well deoned at $267,000 compared to $831,050 last year. This year they have asked for an influent pump at $41,000, an EQ basin, uh, sorry, basin pump at $30,000, an autoclade sterilizer at $20,000, our renewals and extensions that we always have to try and increase our lines and capacity is at $50,000 and then a side mount mower attachment at $45,000. Our water department saw a large increase in revenue at $2,987,153, which we'll talk about why in a second. Our residential increased $179,501. Commercial is projected to decrease at $71,739. Our industrial institutional rate is projected to increase at $95,761. And the biggest increases in our wholesale, excluding Spalding County, that increases at $2,586,690, $2,580 of that being Cowia. So they now are required that to take that 5 million gallons a day regardless of whether or not they use it, and that's that big huge chunk. Um, Spalding did increase slightly, uh, but we're not anticipating any kind of changes, um, from them at this time. Additionally, the water expenses increased $1,604,266. The director has increased $421,214. A lot of that is in professional services, both technologically and in contractual relationships. Still Branch has increased $67,524. Perry Simmons increased $157,280. Water distribution increased $785,202. And as you see, their supplies are the main thing that is up $668,750. Their capital is not all that much. They have renewals and extensions at $50,000, a dump truck at $75,000 and a tow behind compressor at $19,000. So it's all those supplies that they have to use and pipes and concrete and all of that that has gone up so drastically. Again, this is comparing it to FY '22 by removing the depreciation from '22. Otherwise, everything looks like it decreased and it really has not. Our water debt is always a big thing to talk about. Our debt service total for water wastewater is $7,321,430. Reservoir bonds are at $4.339 million. Flint River Pump Station GFO loan is at $319,640. Our Potato Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant GFO loan is at $541,460. Our Cabin Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant GFO loan is at $788,810. And our still branch generators are still at $123,460. Um, of course, when we refunded those bonds, we did have some savings there, but not too much that is shown in this regard. Our total water capital for FY '23 is proposed at $239,000. Total wastewater capital is projected at $267,000. So in all, that's $506,000. Of course, they are capped at a 1.8%. Of course, they are capped at a one point eight milli- or a transfer by ordinance, so they will reserve one million eight hundred and forty-nine thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars for FY twenty-three.
Where are we at on the spillway repair? That's, that hasn't been funded.
Well, we did approve the third modification to the GFO loan at your last meeting, I think that was. So we're up to fourteen million dollars, and we thought it would be about six to seven. So it's almost doubled in cost. Mr. Lewis is working with the contractor now on a contract that we'll bring back before y'all with the notice to proceed, and we'll get started, but we're not, I think we're still negotiating contract. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, we're expecting to have it in Drew's answer review and on the meeting for the fourth meeting.
Stormwater, revenue in stormwater is expected to increase a hundred and thirty-nine thousand two hundred and forty-three dollars. Our expenses, again, decreased, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand four hundred and fifty-six. The notable capital expenses there is a new pickup truck at thirty-eight thousand and a water quality meter at ten thousand nine hundred. Their total capital in that department is quite small, forty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars. Our debt service for principal and interest is three hundred and forty-three thousand three sixty, and they will restrict three hundred and ninety-eight thousand five eighteen. We do not make a transfer from stormwater into general funds, and that all remains in the stormwater department. Solid Waste, their revenue this year increased one million. It's projected to increase one million seven hundred and three thousand dollars five hundred and sixty-two. That makes it, for the first time since, I think, Mr. Schwab has been here in two thousand and seven, over ten million dollars in revenue. That's a huge accomplishment at this point compared to just a few short years ago, we were at about six. So we've made a big, big strides, and solid waste departments actually make out a viable business. So that does mean this year that revenues exceed expenses. That did not happen last year. So we're looking at a hundred and eighty-one thousand two hundred and twenty dollars. It will be restricted. Those are for our capital surcharges and landfill closure surcharges, so that will remain within solid waste. Those revenue increases are expected in residential collections at five hundred and seven thousand dollars. Again, our customers, we're expanding into the county as we can. Our commercial collections, we expect to increase eighty-one thousand five hundred dollars through our marketing campaign that we're doing with solid waste. And our yard waste collections, again, are a direct reflection of the number of houses. That's forty-one thousand seven hundred dollar increase. Of course, the expense to the contractor also increased there. Transfer station, we're expecting an increase of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Our roll-off fees, again, through a big marketing campaign, we expect to increase fifty thousand, fifty-three thousand fifty dollars. And our landfill hut shows the biggest projected increase at seven hundred and seventy-one thousand three hundred and eighty-two. This was right before our fire at the landfill where the shredder caught on fire. We are hoping to have that insurance check in hand soon to be able to buy a new one, but that is a direct reflection of that, being able to compact a lot more and put a lot more in that landfill. So we'll need to get that back pretty quickly to make sure we meet that projection. One thing to note, as of today, we did not budget anything in recycling because we are still negotiating through those contracts. If you'll remember, I think two meetings ago, you approved the cancellation of the Sudoku contract. As we sort of expected, they reached out to us almost immediately once they got notification. We're not happy, want to know how they can work with us and make it a profitable business for us and for them, which we have not been able to even have any kind of conversation about. So that was helpful, I hope. But we've also been talking with Am Waste, American Fiber, and Carolina Recycling. Ms. Carden and Mr. Ennis have worked very well with them, and we hope to see a contract from them soon that would not only pay for our baler or for the use of the baler, but also give us a profit every month. But because we don't have a contract in hand, and everybody's is quite different, and what they are proposing, it was too uncertain to budget at this time. Again, of course, the fire at the recycling center does not help because we can't take anything right now. So we hope to be back with you in the next couple of months to amend the budget to show some kind of revenue in recycling because that program is not going away. We want to make sure that that still exists. It's just that right now, we don't know the best way to project revenue, so it's at zero. The expenses in solid waste also increased, though. They're a million four hundred and sixty-six thousand one hundred and twenty-four more than in FY twenty-two. Couple of their notable purchases are a landfill ATV. We're starting to move back to the new expanded landfill, and you can't get there in a truck. So they're going to have to have an ATV to be able to get back there and start doing some work back there. So that's thirteen thousand three hundred and eighty-seven dollars. They have budgeted for twenty-eight eight-yard dumpsters at forty-three thousand two hundred dollars. Residential carts, of course, more houses, more carts. So six hundred trash and four hundred recycling are at sixty-one thousand dollars. If you have an old trashcan now, you can tell it, and we're having a lot of them having to be replaced or at least repaired. So that's, we don't expect six hundred new housing starts, but we do expect to have to continue to replace those carts more frequently as the years go on. And then the yard waste contract, of course, increased because of the amount of houses that are increasing. So that's an increase of forty thousand six hundred and thirty. The biggest increase in solid waste is across the department is in their fuel. Their budget total is seven hundred and five thousand six hundred and seventy dollars. That's up three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars just in fuel. So that's almost a hundred percent increase for fuel in that department. There is nothing you can do. The only way you can get trash is to drive to it. So, you know, we're doing the best we can to sort of monitor that, make sure that their preventive maintenance is on schedule. But that's just a lot of money and a lot of gas for them. So hopefully, we can keep it as much in check as possible.
Gasoline, or is it?
It's mostly diesel, and then at the landfill, they have bulk delivery of that as well, which actually is more expensive.
It is a little bit more expensive.
Which makes no sense to me, but it is. So, yeah, they have a lot of difference, and I think they have bulk delivery transfer stations, too. Yep, so at our two fixed locations, they have bulk delivery, and they're using diesel on the road. So it's a big expense. Their total capital this year, though, is only the ATV, so thirteen thousand three eighty-seven. If you'll remember, in FY twenty-two, they were the big sort of, needed to make up for no capital purchases. So they were at one million eighty-nine thousand one hundred and eighty dollars last year. There are some transportation projects that they have requested in the budget that we were able to move out, and we're going to use an excess SPOS funds for some paving at the landfill, which will be very helpful even with the expansion of the landfill and paving of the transfer station. Both of those things meet transportation requirements, and so we'll be doing that through that excess SPOS funds. Airports, our total revenues there are one million six hundred and fifty-seven thousand fifty-seven dollars, which does include transfers. Operating revenue at the airport is six hundred and thirty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Spalding County operations are a hundred and thirty-nine thousand five sixty-nine. Spalding County debt service is three hundred and sixty-six thousand five ninety. If you'll remember back four years ago, five years ago, when we started paying back bond debt service, they were not able to do that, so we paid their portion for them. Now they're having to make up for that, so they're paying three hundred and thirty-five thousand five hundred and sixty-five for the current fiscal year debt service, but they're also paying thirty-one thousand twenty-five dollars to make up for those prior years that we paid for them. And then the transfer that we are having to make from the general fund as the city to them is four hundred and forty-five thousand nine eighty-four, which is deon. Last year, it was five hundred and twenty-eight thousand one hundred and ninety-eight dollars. We are projecting to be able to have a lesser transfer from the general fund to the airport. Their expenses are at nine hundred and ten thousand nine twenty-seven. The debt service, again, like I just mentioned, for the city is three hundred and thirty-five thousand five sixty-five, which is two hundred and fifty-seven thousand five hundred dollars in principal, seventy-eight thousand sixty-five dollars in interest. They do have a grant project this year at the existing airport. This is for the design phase only, of payment rehabilitation and remarking. It is a seventy-five thousand dollar cost for the, for the design phase. The FAA is going to pay sixty-seven thousand five hundred. GDOT will pay four thousand seven hundred and fifty, and the city and county will each pay one thousand eight seventy-five. So interesting to continue to do work out there, but it's needed if we're going to continue to operate there until the new airport is done, and it's not at much of a cost to us. Telecom, operating revenue has increased there sixty-eight thousand six hundred and thirty, which gives them the total revenue of just over a million this year, one million fourteen thousand one hundred and thirty dollars. Five hundred and seven thousand six twenty comes from fiber leases. Last year, it was four thirty-eight eight hundred, so you see an increase there with our expansion. And then we do have internal service charges for telecom because we are a customer as the city. So five hundred and six thousand five hundred and ten are internal service charges, which is also an increase from four hundred and fifty-six thousand seven hundred and just for year twenty-two. Their expenses are at nine hundred and four thousand thirty-eight dollars. Most of that comes in the new positions, so two hundred and nine thousand three sixty-three in the telecom support specialist and telecom systems engineer. There's a sixty thousand dollar professional services budget for the consulting that we use with the fiber expansion, and then thirty-five thousand dollars for a new vehicle for those positions. There's eighty-six thousand dollars in operating supplies, and the internet that we purchased from Georgia Public Web to resale is two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Golf course revenue is at five hundred and eight thousand six hundred dollars. That's operating revenue for the transfer in FY twenty-one. It was at three hundred and sixty-one thousand five fifty, so that's an increase of a hundred and forty-seven thousand fifty, which is almost forty percent or over forty percent. Expenses are at one million one thirteen eight oh five, though, which is a twenty-two percent increase in expenses of two hundred and five thousand six hundred and thirty-three. They do have some capital purchases at the golf course this year, tractor at forty-two thousand dollars, the fairway aerifier at ninety-five hundred, pond aerator at ten thousand dollars, and then additional irrigation at ten thousand. You look at that picture up there, you can see exactly why we want to continue to add irrigation to the course because it looks great, and they're doing a great job out there. So the transfer, unfortunately, did go up this year because of the increase in expenses. Again, their most expense increase was fuel. So the total budgeted is fifty thousand seven twenty this year compared to eighteen thousand one hundred in FY twenty-two. They also have bulk delivery of fuel. So that increase is over fifty thousand dollars for the transfer that is needed from the general fund. Motor pool, operating revenue there is one million eighty-one thousand seven hundred and five dollars, and FY twenty-two is at nine hundred and fifty-six thousand one hundred. The expenses are at one million six hundred and twenty-eight thousand four hundred and ninety-five. In FY twenty-two, it was at one million five hundred and sixty-eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight, so this did drop just a little bit. Capital for the motor pool is a pickup truck at thirty-five thousand dollars, and then they have two different diagnostic systems for the vehicles and equipment that come in there that are budgeted at fifteen thousand six hundred. The transfer that is needed from the general fund is five hundred and forty-six thousand seven hundred and ninety, which is actually a decrease from last year. So golf course went up a little bit, but motor pool made up for that and went down almost, well, over a hundred thousand dollars from six fifty-nine five thirty-eight. A little bit more in regards to economic development. Their total expense is at three hundred and eighty-five thousand six hundred and forty-two. That consists of three hundred and thirty-three thousand six hundred and forty-two specific to economic development and the fifty-one thousand seven seventy-five from Historic City Hall. The DDA is at a hundred and twenty thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven, which is a twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and ten dollar increase from FY twenty-two. Hundred nine thousand four oh five is an allocation out of economic development, and then eleven thousand four eighty-two is specific to DDA. Main Street's budget is at a hundred and twenty-nine thousand six eighty-eight, which is a twenty-three thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollar increase from last year. The allocation is, again, a hundred and nine thousand four oh five, and then twenty thousand two hundred and eighty-three is specific to Main Street. Economic Development's budget continues to increase, but I think that's good. That means hopefully, we're getting some more developers in, some more interest in the city, so we need some more help there. So at FY twenty-two, the budget was two hundred and fifty-five thousand nine hundred and fifty-three, so almost a hundred thousand dollar increase there. Hotel motel tax has also increased. In FY twenty-two, we budgeted a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. This year, we budgeted a hundred and sixty-four thousand three hundred. I think people now knowing that we have our new Holiday Inn Express, and then, of course, with COVID restrictions sort of lifting, conferences are back. So a lot of people are using that to stay if they're coming into town for a sporting event, a conference, or anything like that. So a hundred and sixty-four thousand three hundred is budgeted there with an eighteen point seven five percent specific to Historic City Hall, which equals thirty thousand eight oh six. GSPTA will receive the bulk of that as our destination marketing organization at seventy-one thousand eight eighty-one. Then the general fund is able to keep thirty-seven point five percent, which is sixty-one thousand six thirteen. We have a few special revenue funds left to touch on. CDBG, we've budgeted one million five hundred and fifty-two thousand seven eighty-one. We hope to receive that million-dollar grant that we've been getting for several years now, but our local match has gone up to five fifty-two seven eighty-one. Our core technology fee, our fund, is something that is restricted just for the use of core technology. We expect twenty-five thousand dollars in revenue there. SPOS, of course, collections have ended, so we won't have any revenue budgeted for our twenty-sixteen SPOS. Those, those collections ended in April, but we do still have expense, so that expense is held in fund balance right now for SPOS. So one million nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars will be paid for our debt service on the bonds, three hundred thousand dollars, of course, for blight, and then two million three hundred and sixty-seven thousand eight hundred for transportation. Finally, our T-SPOS special revenue fund, we do expect three million seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars in collections for this fiscal year. Those last couple lines, the SPOS expenses and the T-SPOS revenue and expenses, we expect, once we got through budget, we need to sit down and figure out where we're going with those projects, what's going to start when, get those sort of prioritized and in-line and budgeted, possibly bid out. So we'll be back with you pretty soon about what those exact expenses will be and for what and when.
Is that what we excited, I mean, how we forecasted our I P's to be?
Yes, yeah, that shouldn't change. All right, I think that might be a record for getting through budget. Any questions, comments, concerns, changes that need to be made before tonight or June fourteenth?
I think it's exceptional considering the new system and everything else y'all had to work for and new faces. And so it's commendable, a healthy accomplishment. I personally don't have any concerns other than keep watching fuel costs and personnel issues. How we as an organization will continue to provide the service that the citizens expect in the circle.
Well, this brings my appreciation. I went back and looked at the budget with Ms. McCullough. Yes, we had concerns that I may have, so thank you so much.
That's right, I did have one citizen come back. Thank you. It's more fun than just a little clip art. Yes. All right.
Now, the other question that we want to executive session pursuant to CGA Section Fifty fourteen-two, on the purpose of consulting and meeting with legal counsel pertaining to pending potential litigation, settlement, claims, administrative proceedings, and other judicial actions brought or to be brought by or by agency, or employer, or which agency or any officer or employee may be directly involved. Mr. Porter made motion with a second. Mrs. Murray made a second. All in favor, please join us in. Mrs. Murray made a second. All in favor, please join us in. Mrs. Murray made a second, all in favor, please join us in the conference.